Good evening, it's seven o'clock. We will call the September twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, City Council meeting to order. Our first order of this will be the invocation of Bishop Slater. Would you help us with that if anyone would please stand? The following now will have the pleasure of leading.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this opportunity, Lord, that we can come again with the meeting of the minds, Lord, that we'll be able to come as a people to direct the knowledge of wisdom on what's yet to come. Father, bless these who are standing before us. We've put in office, give them clarity of thought and, Lord, in a mindful of you. Father, touch your citizens, touch our first responders, Lord, even the trash collectors, God, we remember them today. Father, we thank you in advance for what you're getting ready to do in this next season. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we have roll call. Here.
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 Present.
Yeah.
Here.
We're all present. Next we have the approval of the minutes from the work session and rego meeting of July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, for adoption. Move to adopt. Any discussion? All five fingers right hand. Pose likewise. Minutes are passed. Next we have presentations. Our first presentation is a resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Claude Jackson. Yeah, I see Claude about there. And, um, by Claude Jackson is an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than eighteen years. So we're going to read a resolution, two thousand nineteen seventy-nine. Whereas Claude Jackson retires on October one, two thousand nineteen, as a police corporal with the Goldsboro Police Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than eighteen years of service. Claude began his career on May sixteen, two thousand one, as a police officer with the Goldsboro Police Department. On November eight, two thousand six, Claude was promoted to police corporal with the Goldsboro Police Department. We had served as a retired. Claude has proven to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration in respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. The mayor, the city council of Goldsboro, and the citizens of Goldsboro desire sometimes themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of expressing to Claude their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over these years. Therefore, it is resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro to call it, number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude for dedicated service rendered during Claude's tenure with the city of Goldsboro, and we offer him our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated to the official amendments of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from this, the twenty-third day, September two thousand nineteen. Offer this for adoption. Move to adopt. Any discussion? All five fingers right hand. Resolution passes. All right, Mr. Claude, come on up and chief, I'm sure you want to come up and say something. You want to say something?
Well, I thank the city for all the years that I've been putting in. This is not the way I want to go out of retirement, but my health is more important. I thank you. I thank the city's citizens and the city for the hours of your service.
Chief Wes.
Very good. Claude came from Burlington, police like Lexington. Came to us, had four or five years of experience with family, came to us and, uh, you know, I was fortunate enough to be Claude's supervisor for several years. And there's one thing about Claude, you could tell Claude, I could tell he would go out and stare on that tree for eleven hours, he would go out and do exactly what I had to do. But what I also liked about Claude is he would come back afterward and say, Captain Yella, there's a better way of doing this. So we always had that give and take back and forth. And it breaks my heart that you're retiring because I enjoyed every moment that I was able to work with you, living with you as a coordinator, an officer, and a friend. You helped me excel in so many ways, and I really do appreciate that, everything you did for the city. Always tried to make the department better and to help the community. And I'm really going to miss that, but you're welcome to stop by anytime and if there's anything I can do or the department can do for you, by all means, by all means. So congratulations.
Mayor Allen, is his family with him?
Is your family here?
Let's get a picture of family.
No, no, move it and give y'all hell get out. It'll look a lot better without us. As long as you got a smile with us.
Congratulations.
Chief Wes says, come by and see us anytime.
All right, next is our veterans stand down day proclamation. Is anybody here for that? They said there might not be. All right, we'll read it real quick. The Wayne County Veterans and Patriot Coalition is dedicated to helping homeless children in military camps in North Carolina. Stand down is a term used in times of war in which exhausted combat units come off the battlefield to rest and recover in a place of safety. Today's stand down also refers to a community-based program that assists homeless and veterans transition to community living by providing access to human service agencies, including benefits, counseling, employment, and training assistance, healthcare, envision screening, housing services, legal assistance, mental health treatment, and substance abuse counseling. Whereas the members of the Wayne County Veterans and Patriot Coalition in partnership with NC Works will hold their Wayne County Stand Down on October third, two thousand nineteen, at the Goldsboro Events Center. The Wayne County Veterans and Patriot Coalition has called upon particularly the city of Goldsboro officials to share facts regarding some of the assistance that may be given to the homeless and veterans in need. Whereas all area churches, universities, business, junior, senior high schools, sororities, fraternity, social, civic organizations, and youth service agency are requested to support the intent of this stand down by promoting the attendance and participation of their volunteers and any known homeless veterans. Therefore, I check out Mayor of the city of Goldsboro to hereby claim Thursday, October third, two thousand nineteen, as veterans stand down in the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, and express our gratitude for those who have served and continue to serve. I think on behalf of us, all of us, we do want to thank all our veterans, and I do want to say this is a good event, they've had it before, they do a really good job. I would encourage you to help, if you know a veteran, I would encourage you to be sure they're there. It's worthwhile, it really is. And this Patriots and Veterans Coalition does a lot of really great work in our community for veterans, so I would encourage you to support them any way you can. All right, so next we have, I probably missed this one up near into August, that's why it's so bad, but I got the Kappa Epsilon Psi Military Sorority Incorporated, the Goldsboro Sigma Chapter, and this is proclamation for them. Whereas the Kappa Epsilon Psi Military Sorority, the Goldsboro Sigma Chapter, became a chapter on August nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. The Goldsboro Sigma Chapter has celebrated its third year as a chapter of Kappa Epsilon Psi Military Sorority. The mission of the Kappa Epsilon, I don't know why we got to say that so many times. The mission of the Kappa Epsilon Psi Military Society, Goldsboro Sigma Chapter, is to aspire to honor past female service members, unite present female service members, and mentor future leadership of our armed forces. The vision of the Kappa Epsilon Psi Military Sorority, Goldsboro Chapter, is to provide innovative agendas and enhance opportunities to mentor women of all ages regardless of race, color, or creed. The Goldsboro Sigma Chapter volunteers throughout the Goldsboro community and surrounding cities to assist veterans' homes, public school events, animal shelters, food drinks, and assisting the American Red Cross during blood drives, yearly back-to-school events, classroom pep talks with female students, and volunteering at Goldsboro High School Junior Reserve Officer Training Competition Events. The Goldsboro Sigma Chapter volunteered during military events such as the One Thirty-Fifth USC Living History Weekend, the Goldsboro Veterans Day Parade, the Annual Purple Hawk Ceremony, the East Coast America Ceremony, and numerous events on Seymour Johnson Air Force Base such as Wings Over Wing. Therefore, I check out Mayor of the city of Goldsboro to come out and do hereby claim September, two thousand nineteen, as Kappa Epsilon Psi Military Sorority, Goldsboro Sigma Chapter Month, and the city of Goldsboro to come out and express our gratitude for those who are supporting. All right, who's here?
All right.
Who's the votes person? If you want to know, well, come on.
On behalf of Kappa Epsilon Psi Military Sorority Incorporated, Goldsboro Sigma Chapter, I would like to thank the citizens of Goldsboro and all the authorities here present today for accepting us into the community and allowing us to do what we love to do and get out into the community and help those who are out here in need. So from all the love to all of you, thank you, we appreciate you, we love you, and look forward to letting you take part in the folks in your areas of service.
Anybody else want to say anything? All right, well, let's take a picture. Y'all better smile, man, we gotta look good. Where's our picture?
I'm gonna let all of them go again.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all very much. Thank you, ladies, for what you do. Okay, that's the end of our presentations, and next we have public hearings. Our first one is CU eight nineteen, Anderson Brewing.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
CU eight nineteen is Anderson Brewing. The property is located on the northeast corner of West Pine Street and South George Street. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a microbrewery with ABC permits. In conjunction with the microbrewery, the applicant intends to operate a bakery. There are two parcels involved with this request. Site one, which is the principal building, has a frontage on Pine Street as well as South George Street and is on central business district. And then site two, or the second parcel, is the customer parking lot, which also has frontage on South George Street and West Pine Street, and is also located or is on central business district. The applicant has proposed to upfit an existing two-story, approximately three thousand square foot brick veneer commercial building for the operation of the microbrewery and bakery. On July fifteenth of two thousand nineteen, Goldsboro City Council amended the city's UDO to add microbreweries as a conditional use in the central business district. The following regulations were also approved as they pertain to microbreweries. Within the area of the CBD bounded by the south side of Ash Street, the east side of George Street, the north side of Elm Street, and the west side of William Street, there shall be no minimum separation distance from residentially zoned or development property. A fifty-foot minimum separation distance shall be required for standalone churches or schools. For the remainder of the CBD not described by the boundaries I just mentioned, the minimum separation distance from residentially zoned or developed property, standalone churches or schools shall be one hundred feet. There shall be no more than five microbreweries located within the area of the CBD bounded by the area I just mentioned. And then in the CBD, there shall be no minimum separation distance between two such establishments. And within that CBD bounded area that I described, there shall be no minimum off-street parking requirements. The applicant's floor plan, which may be hard to see, but you should also have in front of you, the applicant's floor plan indicates a space for retail sales, beer brewing, keg cleaning, keg storage, a kitchen area for baking, goods, and a bathroom. The second floor indicates an office, formation, and storage areas, and a bathroom. Hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, six AM to eight PM with five employees. The existing building and lot existed prior to the adoption of city ordinances. As such, the building does not meet current setback requirements, modifications will be necessary. Since the property is bounded by the south side of Ash Street, the east side of George Street, and the north side of Elm Street, and the west side of William Street, no off-street parking is required. Due to the existing site conditions and limited space, the applicant is requesting a modification of the city's landscape requirements. The applicant owns a vacant lot, once used as a parking lot approximately one hundred forty feet south of the principal building along South George Street. The applicant intends to use the existing parking lot for on-site deliveries and for customers of the business. The parking lot is paved and can accommodate up to twelve parking spaces. And here, again, this is just a picture of the front of the building. This is the rear. And this is a picture of the parking lot I just described. The applicant is requesting the following modifications. Building side yard setback requirement from fifteen feet to zero feet. Building rear yard setback requirement from twenty feet to zero feet. And the city's landscape requirements per section six point three landscaping and buffering standards of the UDO ordinance. At this time, there is no action necessary. The planning commission will have a recommendation for the council's meeting on October the seventh. Any questions for staff?
I have one question, just to be sure. Site, um, two, that's the parking across the street?
Yes, sir. It's on the same side, it's on the same side as the brewery. I'll go back to the aerial. Parking is not required for this building as that was part of the UDO amendments back in July, but the applicant wishes to provide a parking area which exists today. It's an existing parking area, and the property owner owns the parcel.
Okay, so it's site two, the parking?
Yes, sir.
They're gonna have to walk across the street?
They'd have to walk across the street.
That's when we try to see it right.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, if there are no questions, this is a public hearing for CU eight nineteen, which is Anderson Brewing, it's a microbrewery with ABC. The property is located at northeast corner of West Pine, South George. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a microbrewery with ABC permits as well as operate a bakery. Would anybody like to speak? All right, seeing now, we're gonna move to the next. Item F is Goldsboro Brew Works.
Your next item is CU nine nineteen, Goldsboro Brew Works LLC. The property is located on the southwest corner of West Chestnut Street and South James Street. This applicant is also requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a microbrewery with ABC permits. This property has frontage along Chestnut Street and South James Street as indicated on the map. The property is also zoned central business district. The applicant has proposed to upfit an existing one-story, approximately two thousand square foot concrete commercial building for the operation of a microbrewery. The property was previously occupied as a service station. Again, just to remind you, the city council at their July fifteenth meeting amended the city's UDO to add microbreweries as a conditional use for the central business district. The applicant's floor plan indicates space for a taproom, beer brewing, keg cleaning, keg storage, and bathrooms. Hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, it's staff only, eight AM to five PM. Friday through Sunday, with the applicant plans to be open to the public, four PM to ten PM. Number of employees are five. This property is located within the historic district, and any exterior improvements to the property will have to receive a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic District Commission. The existing building and lot existed prior to the adoption of the city's ordinances. As such, the building does not meet current setback requirements, a side yard modification will be necessary. Since the property is bounded by the south side of Ash Street, the east side of George Street, the north side of Elm Street, and the west side of William Street, no off-street parking is required. Due to the existing site conditions and limited space, the applicant is requesting a modification of the city's landscape requirements. This is a picture of the front elevation of the building. This is Chestnut Street. Here's a side elevation from James Street. The applicant's requesting the following modifications. Building side yard setback from fifteen feet to zero feet, and city landscape requirements per section six point three landscaping and buffering standards of the Unified Development Ordinance. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on October the seventh. Any questions?
All right, this is a public hearing, CU nine nineteen, Goldsboro Brew Works, located at northwest corner of Chestnut and James Street. The applicant requests a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a microbrewery with ABC permits. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? Seeing now, we're closing this public hearing, and move to item G, CU ten nineteen, Regina Exum.
Your next item is CU ten nineteen, Regina Exum. This property is located on the north side of Royal Avenue between Jefferson Street and Teakwood Drive. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an adult daycare in conjunction with an existing child daycare facility. The property is zoned neighborhood business. Adult daycares are permitted use only after the issuance of a conditional use permit approved by city council. The property has approximately one hundred and thirty feet of frontage on Royal Avenue and is zoned neighborhood business. The applicant intends to operate an adult daycare in conjunction with an existing child daycare facility. The site has operated as a childcare facility since January of two thousand and eight and is currently licensed for forty children. On Monday, February the fourth of two thousand nineteen, the Goldsboro City Council accepted the applicant's request to withdraw previously submitted conditional use permit application without prejudice because additional information was needed at that time to determine if the proposed use would meet the requirements of the North Carolina State Building Code and the Department of Health and Human Services. Since that time, the applicant employed the services of a North Carolina professional engineer who has submitted design drawings indicating that the proposed use will meet compliance with state building code and the Department of Health and Human Services. Hours of operation are Monday through Friday, five thirty AM to twelve AM. The applicant intends to have three to four employees. The lot is occupied by an existing, about a nineteen hundred square foot, single-story commercial building of wood frame construction. A four-foot-high fence fences the outdoor play area of approximately four thousand square feet, and it exists in the rear of the property. The submitted floor plan indicates that the facility will consist of an adult daycare area of approximately a thousand square feet and two child daycare areas totaling approximately eight hundred and fifty square feet. A kitchen, offices, and three bathrooms will be provided to serve the facility. According to the applicant, the facility will be licensed for an occupancy limited to twenty children and eight adults. The site is served by two existing oversized driveway cuts off Royal Avenue, and existing paved and gravel surfaces exist to provide sufficient areas for parking and an unloading and loading area capable of stacking four vehicles. Existing vegetation is sufficient to meet the intent of the city's landscape ordinance, and due to existing site conditions along Royal Avenue, a modification of street trees will be necessary. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council at your October seventh meeting.
Any questions?
And here's just a picture of the front elevation of the business along Royal Avenue, and then side, kind of shows the rear fenced-in area. Any questions for staff?
All right, this is a public hearing for CU ten nineteen, Regina Exum, north side of Royal Avenue between Jefferson and Teakwood, for adult daycare. Request a conditional use permit to allow the operation of adult daycare in connection with existing child daycare. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? Seeing now, we'll close this public hearing, and we'll move to item H, CU eleven nineteen.
CU eleven nineteen is Louis Jimenez. This property is located on the east side of South NC one eleven highway between Molly Drive and Sheridan Forest Road. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit for outside storage as an accessory use for the operation of an auto repair and service center. As part of the request, separate site plan approval is required. The property is zoned general business. An auto repaired service center is a permitted use within the district, however, outdoor storage can only be permitted after the issuance of a conditional use permit approved by city council. As previously stated, the site consists of one point nine acres. According to the city's Unified Development Code, non-residential developments on parcels that disturb greater than one acre shall be approved by city council. The site is indicated on the map in the red area. The property was previously operated as carny paint and hardware until it was completely destroyed by fire in two thousand and ten. Since that time, the property has remained vacant. The submitted site plan indicates a thirty-seven hundred square foot metal building consisting of an office, parts, and storage area, and a garage consisting of three service bays. The applicant intends to locate the commercial building at the rear of the property and desires to reserve the front portion of the property for future commercial development. According to the city's UDO code, no more than fifty percent of the commercial building's exterior building materials shall be of metal construction. City staff is working with the applicant to ensure the design standards are incorporated. The applicant plans to have two employees, and the hours of operation are eight AM to five thirty PM, Monday through Friday. An existing twenty-four-foot-wide driveway cut provides access to the site off NC one eleven highway. The applicant proposes to install a twenty-foot-wide paved private access road approximately five hundred and ninety feet eastward from the existing terminus to the proposed metal garage building. Fifteen feet of the proposed twenty-foot access road is a recorded ingress, egress, and regress easement for an existing private cemetery located adjacent to the southern property line. Parking shall be based on two spaces per working bay plus one per employee. A total of nine spaces have been provided to meet parking requirements. Street trees are proposed along for the site. Street trees are shown for NC one eleven highway, and seven trees are along the private access drive. The applicant is requesting a modification of the street tree requirement along the southern portion of the access drive due to the existing site conditions and the access to the private cemetery. A type A five-foot-wide landscape buffer yard is proposed along the northern and southern property line. The applicant is requesting a modification of portions of the northern and southern property line that surround the storage area due to existing site conditions and the proposed screening measures. Existing vegetation will satisfy the requirement for a type C twenty-foot-wide landscape buffer along the eastern property line. The submitted site plan shows a proposed storage area for automobiles located behind the repair and service garage for approximately twenty-six thousand nine hundred and forty square feet. A six-foot-high chain-linked fence with vinyl slats will be installed to screen the storage area along the southern and eastern property lines. Additional screening measures will be required along the northern property lines surrounding the storage area. Staff is working with the applicant to install vinyl slats within the existing chain-linked fence that runs along the northern property line. The subject property does fall within the Seymour Johnson Air Force Base seventy seventy-four day-night average sound level noise zone. According to base officials, a noise level reduction of thirty decibels will be required in the design and construction of portions of the building where the public is received. Sidewalks are required for new commercial development, and the applicant's requesting a modification of the requirement to install the sidewalks. If approved by city council, the applicant will be required to pay two thousand and two hundred and fifty as a fee in lieu of sidewalk construction. City water is not available to serve the property. Water will be provided by Eastern Lane Water District, and the city sewer is available to serve the property. Since city sewer is available to serve this property, the applicant will be required to petition for annexation into the Goldsboro city limits. Stormwater calculations and drainage plans have not been permitted or submitted. However, engineering will not issue construction permits until those have been submitted and reviewed. Applicant has provided an interconnectivity and has indicated the location of an easement along the property's frontage. And again, with this request, the following modifications are requested. Modification of the street tree requirement along the southern portion of the access drive. Modification of the landscape buffer yard requirement along portions of the northern and southern property lines, and a modification of the requirement to install city sidewalks. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on October the seventh. And here is a front elevation from NC one eleven looking to the rear of the property. Any questions?
Yeah, you said who will handle their sewer and water?
Excuse me?
Who will handle their sewer and water?
Uh, city sewer, but Eastern Lane Water District will be for water.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right, this is a public hearing, CU eleven nineteen, Louis Antonio Jimenez. East side of NC one eleven. East side of NC-111, between Molly Drive and Sheridan Forest, requesting a conditional use permit for outside storage as an accessory use for the operation of an automotive repair and service center. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? CNN will close this public hearing, and we'll move to item I, which is Z-1619 KG Plaza LLC.
The next item, and the next, actually, the next three items, they're three different public hearings because they are requesting three different zoning rezonings. However, it is the same developer associated with all parcels. Z-1619 is KG Plaza. This property is located on the east side of Eleventh Street between Norwood Avenue and Inglewood Drive. The applicant's requesting the rezoning from R-9 C.D., which is Conditional District, and R-16 Residential, to O-N-I-1, which is Office and Institutional. The owner-developer will be required to submit a site plan for review and approval by City Council before future development of the property. The site is indicated on the map in the red bounded area, and again, has approximately six hundred and sixty feet along Eleventh Street. Surrounding zones to the north, south, east, you have R-16, and to the west, Office and Institutional. The property is currently vacant and undeveloped. As previously stated, the applicant is requesting a zoning change from R-9 and R-16 to O-N-I-1. The applicant intends to develop the property for commercial purposes. And as previously noted, a separate site plan approval for any future development will come back before City Council. City water and sewer are available to serve the property. The applicant will be required to petition for annexation into the Goldsboro City Limits since the site is within a thousand feet of city sewer, and the property is not located within a special flood hazard area. The city's comprehensive land use plan recommends medium-density residential development for the property. The proposed site for the development is directly across the street from property that is recommended for Office and Institutional Development and currently occupied by a church. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council on October the seventh. And here is a picture of the property, looking back towards Wayne Memorial Drive. Any questions?
Any questions? CNN, this is a public hearing for case Z-1619 KG Plaza, east side of Eleventh Street between Norwood Avenue and Inglewood. They're requesting rezoning from R-9 C.D. to, and R-16 Residential to O-N-I Office and Institutional. And just as Jennifer said, they would have to submit a site plan before any development of the property could occur. Would anybody like to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need their name and address? Would that help you? Can we have your name, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am. Jean Clay. I live at four oh four Tryon Drive in Goldsboro, and I have some concerns about the development of this property as it relates to flooding. On the south side of the creek there that floods near Wayne Memorial Hospital, you know, it floods frequently, as well as the nursing home, Willow Creek. So it would be my hope and intention for the developer to say that there will be adequate drainage, adequate retention pond, or something to support the addition of many extra paved areas, cement, and roads that might cause increased flooding that goes all the way to Wayne Memorial Hospital.
I will respond just a little bit, because I've seen emails, and Jennifer, you correct me if I'm wrong. First thing what I'm sure of is they do have to do a site plan, and they do have to retain their stormwater on-site and properly release it, because the state laws are a lot different now than they were when most of that area was developed. But I'm sure that'll happen.
Okay, so there'll be additional information to the public about this?
Absolutely, there'll be additional. And then on top of that, I believe I saw an email where this land is not draining into the same watershed as the folks towards Norwood Avenue and Lock Haven and all that way. It's going the other way. So I don't think this water's draining back that way anyway, but that will be addressed when they do the site plan for sure. So then they'll have the hydro studies and all that, so we'll know that.
Well, on the south side, that is a problem.
I'm sure. I absolutely know. It's a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Nick Reitmeyer. I'm with Joyne R. Keeney. I'm here representing the owner and the developer. We are a land planning, surveying, and engineering firm. You know, we've taken a preliminary look at this site, and, you know, we've talked to the city. You know, water and sewer is readily available. As you mentioned, the stormwater aspect of, you know, the drainage, that all will, it will be, you know, designed for the standards and, you know, detention ponds as needed. And we just wanted to come introduce myself and see if I could answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Anybody have any questions? How many units are we planning on that location?
This is the O-N-I. He doesn't have a plan yet. It's just the rezoning right now.
He doesn't have any idea, though?
No.
But this is, Catherine, this is the commercial piece. The other two pieces were the residential that's coming up that you're talking about, I think. Any, anything else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments from the audience? All right, CNN, we're gonna close this public hearing. We're gonna move to Z-1719 KG Plaza, east side of Eleventh Street, Norwood Avenue, Inglewood.
Z-1719 is again KG Plaza LLC. This property is located on the east side of Eleventh Street between Norwood Avenue and Inglewood Drive. This is directly adjacent to the O-N-I property that was just discussed. The applicant's requesting a change of zone from Residential R-16 and Residential R-9 Conditional District to Residential R-6 Conditional District for a three hundred and three lot cluster subdivision. In conjunction with the request, the applicant is requesting separate site plan approval by City Council. As shown on the map before you, there are four parcels associated with this rezoning request, which is roughly an estimate of ninety acres in total. But each parcel on here is divided amongst and obviously will be combined once the development comes through and is properly rezoned. The surrounding zoning to the north, you have General Industry, which is I-2, Residential R-12, Office and Institutional, O-N-I-1. To the south, you have Residential R-16 and Office and Institutional. To the east, Office and Institutional, and to the west, R-16. The four parcels are currently vacant and undeveloped. As you can see in this aerial, it shows it was previously farmland, but is undeveloped at the time, at this time. As presently, previously stated, the applicant's requesting a zoning change from R-16, R-9, to R-6 Conditional District. The applicant has submitted a site plan, a conceptual site plan, indicating approximately ninety acres for the development of a three hundred and three lot cluster subdivision to include a clubhouse and pool area within Goldsboro City Limits. According to the city's UDO, the developer may reduce the minimum lot size, width, and setbacks for up to forty percent from the specifications of the prevailing zoning district. The council may require larger lot size if, in the opinion of the city council, smaller lots would be incompatible with adjoining developments. At least twenty percent of the total project area shall be reserved as commonly held open space and be preserved in a natural or vegetative state. The applicant has reserved twenty-four point seven acres of the site as open space. In addition, the required open space shall be held in common ownership for the benefit of the residents of the development by a legally established corporation, association, or other legal entity, or be dedicated to the city of Goldsboro as a public park. City water and sewer are available to serve the property, and the applicant will be required to petition for annexation into the Goldsboro City Limits. The property, again, is not located within a special flood hazard area. Stormwater calculations and drainage plans shall be approved by city engineering before construction permits are issued. All streets and parking areas shall meet city standards. All utilities shall be installed underground, and curbing gutter is required. Driveway permits shall be approved by NC DOT, and NC DOT is requiring the developer to conduct a traffic impact analysis to determine if any additional road improvements are necessary due to the proposed subdivision. Internal sidewalks are required to form a safe and convenient system for pedestrians' access to all dwelling units, project facilities, open space, and off-site pedestrian destinations. And in addition, external sidewalks are required along any adjacent public or private streets. As a requirement of the residential subdivision approval, the developer shall plant trees in the front setback of each lot and in any side or rear lot abutting an existing or proposed right-of-way in the subdivision. The proposed subdivision requires a type-B fifteen-foot-wide landscape buffer yard where abutting existing non-residential developments to the east were constructed before the adoption of this ordinance and the lack of the required buffer yard. Interconnectivity has been provided east of the proposed subdivision and an adjacent existing residential development. The city's comprehensive land use plan recommends medium-density residential development. However, in areas where city water and sewer are available to serve the property, the city's comprehensive land use plan recommends that higher densities should be allowed and encouraged. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation at your October seventh meeting. And here is a elevation looking back towards Pate Town. And here is a picture looking back towards Wayne Memorial Drive.
Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
CNN, this is a public hearing, Z-1719 KG Plaza, east side of Eleventh Street between Norwood and Inglewood. Requesting a zone, a change of zone from Residential R-16 and Residential R-9 Conditional District to Residential R-6 Conditional District for a three hundred and three cluster subdivision. In conjunction with this request, the applicant's requesting separate site plan approvals, and they're breaking the parcels down to four parcels, thirty-two acres, eleven acres, twenty-six acres, and twenty-two acres proportionally. So this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Come back up here, please.
Jean Clay, again, I still have the same concern about this area that I did before. Although this is not covered in a flood plain, flood plains do not take any consideration for flash floods that are brought about by hurricanes or the storms. So this is a lot of property here for there to be flash floods and flooding.
And once again, I want to read it. We're very aware, and that'll be discussed a lot, okay? Anybody else like to speak? I see a couple. Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Samuel Walton.
So, I'm sorry, sir?
Samuel Walton.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
This has to do with Z-17 and the next one, Z-18, actually. Because it has to do with the ditch, ditches.
Okay.
We're on the other side of the road.
On the other side of Eleventh Street?
Other side of Eleventh Street.
Okay, gotcha.
On the backside of the other property they're planning to develop.
Okay.
And the fall of the land falls towards the creek.
Okay.
And we're worried that there may not be adequate ditching towards the creek. And on top of that, which we got to the other land, it's extremely low, and it floods. Floods on us. It floods on their land. Nothing grows next to the woods. And on top of that, there's a ditch here that runs towards the road but ends and goes nowhere that the church flows into, the theater flows into, and the new storage facility. And they have ponds outside of both of those and the church that also flow into the ditch.
Right.
Well, where does that go? If it goes toward Eleventh Street but can't go past the Eleventh Street, it comes back on us.
What I would ask you to do, suggest you do, is come into the city and meet with Jennifer, and she'll hook you up with our engineering department.
I'll meet with her. I'll meet with him.
Well, then we'll meet with him.
I mind talking to him, too.
Well, that's perfect.
I'll tell him. I live back there. He can come back there anytime he wants.
Yeah, we want to do everything we can to alleviate.
I can show him everything. I can show him the property lines.
All right, we'll meet with him. And then if anything we can do at the city, we're here to help too, okay?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
We don't want any more floods. We don't want any more flooding.
They've been there since I've been alive, thirty-five.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Can you come up here, ma'am?
I'm Dale Walton.
Okay.
My husband is Jarvis Walton.
Okay.
The owner of part of the property that you're fixing to show next.
Okay.
I can wait for that, but it still concerns part of what I'm saying.
Just come up to the microphone if you would.
I will.
I'm the wife of Jarvis Walton and the mother of Samuel Walton.
Okay.
All right? We're the owners of the land which connects to the backside of the land that has just been purchased by KG Plaza LLC.
Okay.
There are a few statements that our family of five generations farming needs to be said.
Okay.
The back portion of the land, a drainage ditch, exists. This ditch and the pitch of the ditch needs to continue to drain north to the creek that is across the street from Eleventh Street, which I saw on the diagram you just showed. It shows the ditch, but it doesn't show it going on draining to the creek. So I'm wondering with all these houses being built, is that drainage going to continue to the creek? Or is it going to come back to Eleventh Street and back up and still flood more on what is existing now?
Okay, and obviously, we haven't seen the plan, so same thing.
You can answer.
Well, then you can talk to the engineer as well.
This doesn't need to change our farmland because it's in danger of flooding our crops and destroying the crops. Already, the ditch on the right side of the farmland that my son was talking about and the land that newly existed that has been purchased has a flooding and drainage problem. This ditch has no way of getting to the creek across Eleventh Street where the water is to run off and to, into. This has impeded the flow of the water when the ditch fills. In the past, since the movie theater, the storage facility, and the large church on Eleventh Street has been built, the flooding problems are there and not being addressed and continues to be drawn, drowning our crops that backs up. We're on the left side in the back area of the storage facility.
Gotcha.
Okay? Now, they have drainage ponds. I think they've got two, and they were supposed to have three. Somebody was supposed to have three. When Papa was alive, he said one of them was missing. But that's here and there. I don't know about that. I do know that the theater complains and complains about the flooding of their parking lot continuously because something's not been done right for it to keep puddling and ponding back there and then coming off onto that five-and-a-half-acre piece wheat farm, soybeans, and other vegetable zone. Now, we are requesting that the Army Corps of Engineering and the Goldsboro and Wayne County Engineering look into this matter further before any multi-dwellings are built. I'm sure that they can resolve this drainage problem before other problems are created or occur. Now, we are asking that the officials of Goldsboro and Wayne County take into consideration that the Walton's fifth-generation family farm, as we would like to continue to farm our family farm without more drainage problems. I sincerely hope that you feel, as we do, that the farming of our crops is the value of the livelihood as well as feeding the residents of Goldsboro and Wayne County. And I sincerely say this with all my heart that farmers, small farmers, are disappearing. We're going to disappear if y'all continue to let us drown the crops.
Absolutely.
Now, when Doug Henry bought his facility, we had an issue with that because one of the drainage ditches that was supposed to drain got cemented over and paved over, and it backed up onto our housing, our dwellings. And we're still dealing with that when we have great flames. But we can't do anything about the weather when it comes. But we've got problems where it won't drain because it has an issue out there. Now, we have lived and survived with that, but we will not be able to profit any of our crops. And we are one of the last farms in the city of Goldsboro. We are surrounded. We know development is happening. But you can help us and prevent us from not being able to feed y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to, do you want to speak? Good evening, sir.
How you doing, sir? My name is Edgar Price.
I'm his sister, Sina Thompson.
I have concerns. We have property with Mama, have property on Norwood Avenue, according to Norwood and Twelfth Street. And that vacant house behind us, the road, the dirt road separating the house beside us, and if you go down to the house that's empty, it's been sold.
To the property.
Yeah, we want to kind of want to know if, if more of the problem is... Yeah, we want to kind of want to know if, if more of the problem is only question, but the traffic in that road that's dirt, wherever will it be paved or prompted code? Or will it be used as an outlet inlet for that property that's being built behind our house?
The dirt roads on Norwood Avenue?
Yes, it's actually Twelfth Street, but the first part of Twelfth Street is paved, goes into the residential area. The house beside us, there's a road that we use for our parking, you know, going in and out of our house wherever. And there's a house behind us that's, I guess, been sold.
The farmland, where that farmland where they're trying to develop those properties.
We haven't seen a plan yet, so we don't really know how to answer your question. But same thing, if you can talk to the engineer right there, or if you can come into the planning department, they can specifically help you address your questions or your issues.
And those are the concerns that we have as residents there. These are senior citizens and, you know, retired military community. And we are very concerned with this development because it does flood. It floods really bad. And I have taken pictures of it and it's on my mom's phone. And so we were, you know, my mom was very concerned about what's been going on. And she's unable to come because she was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. So that's what we've been dealing with, so she asked us to come and represent her, you know?
Feel free to talk to him, to the engineer to introduce himself, and then Jennifer here can help you. Just come to the city planning department and we'll see if we can help you, along with everybody, get the questions resolved.
Yeah.
How many houses on that dirt road?
It's a house right beside us. And the house is right behind us, it's empty, I guess it's all that property that's been sold.
Mr. Jesse, Mr. Jesse.
Yeah, we've been there since eighty-four.
Yeah, we're right at the corner.
Yeah, right at the corner.
That's it, right there.
And our property, our property kind of like over is like their property that is bought, so we don't know exactly where that property line is at. My mom has concerns because we have an outside house that's right there on that line.
It's actually like a barn. And it sits between their property and Mom's property. And so we have deep concerns. And just like this lady has spoken about, you know, the concern of flooding and stuff. And with these developments happening, you know, it gets worse, you know, because of the storage not being taken care of. And right there on Mama's property, it always flood, right over into our neighbors' house, you know, their houses. And they're right across the street on Twelfth Street, so.
Well, I can say pertaining to the dirt roads, we are trying to tackle a lot of the dirt roads here in the city. So we'll try to get to it.
And one thing, I think they'll say that was a part of the city because they just got annexed maybe the last, maybe twenty years, that part of Norwood Avenue. But that particular street, that we have issues because we have to have the city come out and rebuild that road because it gets potholes and stuff. They say we won't pay because it's not Quonkot City, whoever, it's really low on the tone of bargain.
And Norwood is very narrow. Norwood is very narrow. Two cars can't even bypass one another without having to wait for the other car to pass, you know? And so we have issues with, you know, with this development, you know, we have concerns. And these concerns are very, you know, they're, you know, we're just afraid of the, you know, the yeah, the uncertainties and stuff.
So Jennifer, is that, is that in our ETJ, that particular street? Or is that something that we, that isn't at the moment?
The, the, that is within the city, I believe. I have the, I don't have the maps right in front of me, but the area that's being proposed without the ETJ.
Okay, so.
They have to be connected to the city.
Okay, okay. So we're gonna, we'll see what we could do pertaining to that dirt road. And again, like the mayor stated that, you know, if you could sit down with planning, you know, go from there. And I, you know, I hope that, you know, we could resolve the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Alright, seeing none, we're going to close this public hearing and we're going to move to Z eighteen nineteen KG Plaza LLC.
Item Z eighteen nineteen is again KG Plaza. This property is located on the west side of Eleventh Street between Norwood Avenue and Inglewood Drive. The applicant's requesting the rezoning from R sixteen to R six CD, which is conditional district, for a multifamily development. Separate site plan approval by city council is required. This property is directly adjacent to the item that we just discussed. Surrounding zoning to the north, you have R sixteen, to the south, R sixteen general business and office and institutional, to the east, R sixteen, and to the west, R sixteen. And again, this property is adjacent to the church and kind of backs up to the cinemas and the storage facility, which many have raised concerns already tonight. The property is currently vacant and undeveloped. Here is an aerial view of the property. And as previously stated, the applicant is requesting a zoning change for multifamily development. In conjunction with the request, the applicant is requesting a waiver of the site plan requirement at the time of rezoning. If the rezoning is approved, the applicant will be required to have a site plan approved by city council before future development of the property. City water and sewer are available to serve the property and the applicant will be required to petition for annexation into the city limits. The city's comprehensive land use plan recommends medium density residential development for the property. At this time, there is no action necessary and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council on October the seventh. And here is directly straight looking at the property to the rear from Eleventh Street. Any questions for staff?
Seeing none, this is a public hearing, Z eighteen nineteen KG Plaza, west side of Love Street between Norwood Avenue and Inglewood Drive, requesting a rezoning from R sixteen residential to R SCD residential conditional, residential six conditional district for multifamily development. Would anyone like to speak? Would anyone like to speak? Alright, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I will just make one comment to all the folks who live out in that area, did you want to speak?
Yes, sir.
Well, you already spoke once. But come on, Cory, come on.
Thanks, sir.
Go ahead.
Nick Wrightmire with Joina Kenee. There was a lot of issues raised or concerns about the drainage. We're very early into the design, so I don't have any specifics. You know, it's understandable that there's always concerns when you go from pervious to impervious. The amount of storm water, the volume of storm water is increased. The way that we handle that, and it's typical for every development, we look at the pre-development drainage areas, discharge points, and the runoff rates. And, you know, part of our design is to include detention ponds that slow down the release of the water. And our goal is always to match the same drainage courses and the same flow rates as pre-development. So as to not impact any downstream drainage features.
Alright.
And also, I wanted to speak to, there were some concerns about Norwood, that paved road. We, that will be one of our entrances into the site. And, you know, if the city determines that it's in the best interest to make improvements to Norwood as part of that project, I'm sure the developer would be open to that. As Jennifer mentioned, we are conducting a traffic impact analysis which will identify any improvements that need to be made. Turn lanes or signal improvements. And our intent is to incorporate any recommendations that come back from the impact analysis.
Alright. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Alright, so we've got another lady back here. You can, come on. I'm opening the public hearing back up, I guess.
My name is Teresa Walton.
Good evening.
I'm also a member of the family that is back there, my husband owns property. We have had so much trouble on the drainage and we are very, very concerned with what's going to come about. On part of this is already marsh and we know that the drainage is in poor shape. The ditches are on our property and we just want to make sure that the drainage is addressed before anything is done because we can't have any more water on us. Like she said, we're trying to grow things for people. We dedicate stuff to the soup kitchen every year. But we can't have anything to dedicate if it gets grounded. So we want more consideration in this drainage problem before anything is done.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, last chance, anybody else want to speak? Alright, we're going to close this public hearing. And I do want to say one thing to the folks that live out in that area, especially Norwood Avenue. We're very aware of the flooding problems over there. If you've seen us, we've been doing ditching work over there for the last few months. One of the problems is on Eleventh Street, a lot of the ditches close to the church and all there got closed, got piped in, so the water doesn't go in as fast. And so sometimes in a heavy rain, the water comes across Eleventh Street and comes into the neighborhood over there. So we're aware of that. We cleaned out the ditch that's on Lock Haven and running behind Lockstone and all that, so we're working on that. We still know there are problems, we do know from the residents we've talked to, it's better. We also know that the whole area around the theater and the church doesn't drain well. Our folks in engineering and public works are getting with DOT because those are DOT ditches. And we're trying to work out some stuff there, nothing's been done yet. But we do, I do understand your pain, if nothing else, and we will definitely take all this into consideration as everything moves forward. So that's that on that. Next is our public comment period time, it's this time.
Any issues?
What?
You will let them leave?
Oh, yeah, y'all can be excused. I'm sorry. This is our public comment period time, it's time. Anybody, thank y'all for what you do. Anybody from the public can speak for up to three minutes. We're not going to campaign, we're not going to pollute it. Talk about city employees and your comments need to be related to city business, please. One second, let a few of these people walk out of here. Could you folks exit if you're going to exit, please? Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I have two questions for you. Number one, how many more beard joints are you going to put in this town? For over the last year that I've been coming to these meetings, just about every three months, somebody comes up here wanting one or two or three or four. One of them even wanted an axe throwing place. And my second question relates to why? Your city manager has to or needs to hire an outside counsel to cover the city attorney's butt. And it is my business, it's the business of everybody living in this town.
Okay.
And I want an answer to it.
Okay. We're taking your questions, we'll respond.
Are you going to answer it?
Not tonight, ma'am.
That's about what I thought.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You ain't got what it takes to answer it.
Yeah, okay. Have a good night, okay?
Oh, I have. And it's getting even better.
Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I come this evening to voice my opinion and concerns regarding item Z that has been removed from the consent agenda. The view of many citizens I've spoken with is that this is a ploy to pay Shakol Simpson Carter for her silence and for her taking part in a conspiracy to exact political retribution and removal of Councilman Williams from the Goldsboro City Council. The co-conspirators are believed to include, but not limited to, members of the city council. At face value, if Simpson Carter's case has merit in that the city of Goldsboro did nothing to stop, handle, or ameliorate the harassment she alleges, then a set of facts should be established as to who the persons were within the city's government that knew of the alleged harassment and did nothing. If a city council member did nothing because events did not reach their own individual threshold of concern, then their doing nothing would seem plausible. Then too, if council members collectively did nothing because events did not reach their collective threshold of concern, then their alleged inaction appears plausible. However, if council members and/or other persons in their official capacity constructed and propagated a false narrative while using the alleged incidents, their behavior is tantamount to conspiracy and fraud. Therefore, for the council and/or its representatives to move to settle ongoing litigation without a full examination of the facts, while also at the same time seeking to bind any of the parties to a non-disclosure agreement could be seen as an effort to stifle and bury the truth. This gives added weight to the suggestion that city employees and others may have been advised not to appear and have their testimony taken under oath at the sensor hearing held on July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. If this occurred, we need to know who advised them and why. Therefore, I say, let the EEOC conduct their full investigation and then proceed based upon those findings. This takes the matter out of the hands of the current city government that has shown itself to be in some ways incompetent and in other ways possibly corrupt.
Anybody else want to speak? Anybody else want to speak? Anybody else want to speak? Seeing none, we're going to close the public comment period. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm coming here because the past eight months, this issue regarding Shakol Simpson Carter has been ridiculous. And to see in the paper that a confidential document, an EEOC complaint, is now being alleged by her, not only against Mr. Williams, but against the city, is absolutely ridiculous. The fact that she's claiming Mr. Williams has discriminated against her because she's an African-American woman is absolutely ridiculous. I think it's not by coincidence that you guys put item Z on the agenda, and I also feel that you're doing it to hide or, in other words, use our tax dollars to pay off a blackmail claim. And my tax dollars should not go to pay one dime to Shakol Simpson Carter for her false, defamatory, and her attack on this community. Now, what I also would like to know, Mr. Williams, in the five o'clock meeting, you said there were documents you asked of the city manager, city attorney, and the HR director, what were those documents?
Those documents were EEOC report, also emails and contracts with attorneys. That's what I asked for.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you, city manager and city attorney, since HR is not here, why are you refusing to give Mr. Williams those documents? Especially considering, I would think you would be concerned that your community affairs director released this information to the newspaper. So why would you not, or better yet, did you release that document to the newspaper? The EEOC complaint?
You said community affairs?
Community affairs director Shakol Simpson Carter, the EEOC complaint, did you release it to the newspaper?
No, I did not.
Okay. Did your HR director release it?
No, she did not.
Okay, so we are going to assume the only person who could have released it is Shakol Simpson Carter. So does that not concern you as a city manager that you have an employee releasing confidential information to the newspaper to further defame Mr. Williams?
It does, and we asked and she said she did not release it.
Well, who else would release that information? According to EEOC, when a complaint is filed, it comes into the city, city manager receives it. City manager receives it, HR receives it, and the person who alleged the complaint receives it. So there's only three people. Only three people could have released it. And that seems to be an ongoing problem here in the city, that information continues to get released. And you guys continue to support it, and I'm wondering why, and I think a lot of other citizens are wondering why.
Thank you ma'am.
He was gonna respond.
I responded and we, I did not release it, nor did the human resources director release it.
Okay, but I also ask another question. Why do you continue
Continue to do what?
To support something that you know is false?
I don't know if it's false or not.
Have you done an investigation?
Into what?
Into her EEOC complaint.
That remains to be seen.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna speak?
Good evening.
Alicia Pierce. Um, as I'm sitting there and I am in agreement with a few things that with the item Z being removed, or not removed, but for later, I'm not sure why we should be dealing with it at all. At the forum, you all, or some of you mentioned that you want to start including the public in your decision-making. From what I remember, most of you, with the exception of the mayor, mentioned that yes, there's things I want to do to include the public in my decision-making. He just talked about being available in different places to shake hands and meet people. He never mentioned that he wanted to include us in decision-making. But for those of you that did say you want to include us in decision-making, at this point, item Z, as a public person, I would like to ask you to include me in the decision-making. And my opinion is that it does not be allowed that if I elect a public official, I do not want that public official to give the city manager the right that that public official should have, which is for every case, it go to the public, for the council to read it and see it. So that's my opinion on that. Um, I also feel like um, the young lady that just had a seat asked a question and I'm not sure if it was answered. Is there a reason why you're not releasing those documents that was already released to the public to our elected official?
It's a personnel issue, so we can't just release anything relating to personnel, okay?
But that's not a personnel issue. We're asking for the same document.
It's an EE.
We're asking for the same document that was released to the newspaper and released to a young man that worked at Goldsboro High School. So what you're telling me is I'm also an educator. If I contact you tomorrow, you're gonna release that document to me? Because one of those newspapers is pretty much a blog and the young man works for a high school. And then he posts his things like a newspaper. So I'm not sure why the accused cannot receive those documents, but someone that works for a high school
It cannot be released. An EEOC complaint cannot be released to the general public.
But did not the general public see at least half of the sheet in the newspaper?
I have no idea how that person got that.
You didn't read it?
No, I read it. I read the half a page.
Okay.
If you could barely make it out.
We all read the half a page, okay. Well, the bottom line is, like I said, the elected officials did say in the candidacy that they want to start allowing us to have part of the decision-making. And so part of my decision-making is that item Z should not be granted to the city manager at all. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna close the public hearings. We're gonna move to consent agenda.
Anybody else, did anybody else have anything they wanted to say?
I've already said it. Nobody said anything?
Yeah, I got a lot that I want to say, but I don't think I'm gonna give it out and say it.
Are you coming to speak, sir?
Yes, sir. My name is Julian Swain and, uh, I didn't really have anything prepared, but after hearing everything, I've been reading the news articles, you know, about every day for the last four years. And I just don't understand how it was so important to have the issue that you raised with Mr. Williams in the front page and all of the pa- all of the paper, you know, day after day. You know, we've got a lot of pressing matters here in Goldsboro and that didn't seem like it was one of them. And I'm kinda disheartened today to hear how you guys respond to the general public, which I'm a part of. And I just wanna make that comment for the record.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, does anybody else wanna speak? Alright, CNN, we're gonna close the public hearing and we're gonna move to our consent agenda. And we removed item Q for individual actions and we removed item, uh, K, was it K?
Z.
Z, I'm sorry.
Z was removed as an issue.
We removed it, period. So it's not on there.
Correct.
Um, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We've gotta do the, uh, not yet.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve items L through Y with the exception of Q.
And Z.
And AA.
And Z.
AA.
Huh?
Item AA.
To include item AA on the consent agenda, which is the department monthly reports.
Yep, okay. So is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Allen?
Yes ma'am.
Mayor Proton Broadway?
Yes.
Councilman Murray?
Yes.
Councilman Foster?
No.
Councilman Murray?
Yes.
Councilman Ray?
Yes.
Alright, consent agenda is approved. Next, we have item Q, which is there, uh, was been removed to individual action. And that's to, um, approve the compost bulk pricing. I've asked that I be excused because on occasion I buy bulk compost from the compost plant. So I need a motion to be excused from item Q, please.
Move to excuse the mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All the affairs, raise your hand. Motion is approved. Alright, so council member, uh, Mayor Proton Broadway is gonna handle item Q.
Item Q is to approve compost bulk pricing. Following three years of increased sales, average compost and mulch sales have decreased since August of two thousand nineteen. At that time, wholesale and retail bulk compost prices were increased six dollars per cubic yard and mulch to two dollars per cubic yard. This preceded Hurricanes Florence and Michael and the next nine months of wet and rainy weather. In the discussion, compost and mulch sales were increasingly steadily over the last three years. However, due to the weather out of our control and negative feedback from some regular customers on the price increase, sales declined. It is essential that the compost facility move compost and mulch products to ensure compliance with the facility's stormwater and bio-solage permits. Space has been limited due to the abundance of product. On site, there is more than four thousand eight hundred and eighty cubic yards of bulk compost and around eight thousand six hundred and forty cubic yards of mulch on the ground. October tends to be the time of replanting cover crops and maintaining healthy soils. In order to make room at the compost facility, it is recommended that October two nineteen, two thousand nineteen, prices for bulk compost be reduced to six dollars and mulch be available free. It is recommended that city council approve compost pricing for October one, two thousand nineteen, to October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, as follows. Nine, 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 nine dollars per cubic yard for compost purchase over twenty cubic yards. Fifteen dollar cubic yards for compost purchasing less than twenty cubic yards. Two dollars for thirty-pound bi- bags for regular buyers and four dollars for thirty-pound bag for non-wholesale buyers and the mulch free. We're just trying to get rid of that which we've got too much. And I offer, I offer that as a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries, sir.
Alright, so that's item Q. Next, we have, uh, that's the last thing we'll require individual action. We have the city manager's report.
I have nothing to add, sir.
Uh, council member?
Williams?
No report. Council member Broadway?
I just have one thing. I would like to encourage everybody at, uh, for, to go out to the soldier's stand down. That's been held a number of years and a lot of people, a lot of homeless people get a lot of help and they get ready for winter. Last year, they gave out about four hundred coats. They had people there for dental, they had people there for medical, and they had about four VA booths. If you're out in that area, please go. If you know anybody, send them out there. That's, that's on October the third at Goldsboro Event Center. That's all I have, sir.
Thanks, sir. Councilor Pritchard?
Um, yes. This past week, I asked for Wayne Water District to be added to the agenda and it was denied by a mayor. Back in twenty seventeen, the council voted for the mayor to have power to control the agenda and what goes on and what, what doesn't go on it. Um, I feel that it was wrong. Um, it was a five-two vote. It was approved. Since then, you know, if, if myself or Councilman Williams has something that we wanna discuss concerning our constituents, it's been a problem for us. And, um, it's just continued to cause a problem because if the mayor doesn't want it on the agenda, he simply says no. Now, with this issue with the Wayne Water District, you know, it's been a conflict of interest because, um, he's had a hand in it. And then also you, you know, decide that you don't wanna, you don't wanna discuss it. And after reviewing all the contracts and, and, um, the letter from our attorney to Wayne Water District, you know, it brought, it brought about a lot of concerns. And this, this is a letter from July tenth, twenty nineteen, uh, from Everett, Womberly, Lawrence. Um, and it's addressed to Steve Hampton, District Manager, Southeastern Wayne Sanitary District. And I'm gonna skip down to the bottom and it says on, "On behalf of my client, I am authorized to convey that the city would be amenable to appro- to an agreement until the city determines otherwise for SEWSD to sell portable water to Case Farms if the city is paid three thirteen per thousand gallons for the portable water sold to Case Farms by SEWSD." Now, my problem that I have with this is that that was never approved by council. So who gave our city attorney the right to negotiate a price with Southeastern Wayne Water District? That's what I would like to know. These, these are the things that are happening, been happening at the city. It's a disgrace, it's a disgrace to this board. Because at no other time during anything will our attorney go and negotiate anything on behalf of this council without approval from this council. You can't go and give somebody numbers without us approving it first. And that's just one of the first wrongdoings. And like I said, the mayor, um, had a contract with, well, he didn't have a contract, he, he placed a bid for a project out at Case Farms. He was, he was the second highest bidder. He was awarded, awarded the bid because of the company that was already on the project stated they had did work with him before. Now, when, when, when Case Farms gave the money to Southeastern Wayne Water District to pay our mayor for his work, all of a sudden, he backed out of the work. And then after that, our city started going after Southeastern Wayne Water District for more money for the water they're buying from us. Now, in the original contract, it states that they can't sell water to our client. But, in the contract also, they've never been our client. They've only been our client with sewer. Sewer and water are two different things. They've never bought water from us, gentlemen, never. So, how have they been our client with water? And how are we going after them for that?
They, they are buying water.
Not from us. They're buying water from Southeastern Wayne Water District. They've never bought water from us because we can't produce at the pressure that they need to for their water. So nowhere have they bought water from us. They, they purchased sewer from us.
No, they buy water from us.
Okay, then what does the contract state they buy from us? Sewer. Nowhere in the contract does it say water. Now, I can, I have the contract because you sent it to me. So we're just gonna sit here and we're gonna go off the contract and I've talked to people at Southeastern Wayne Water District. We can't produce at the quality of water that they need nor the pressure, so they have no reason to buy water from us. Now, show me the documents where they bought water from us. I'll wait on them. You can send them to me tomorrow. Don't show me documents of the sewer. I want documents of water that they bought from us because they haven't bought any water from us. Now, this contract has been, we started this back in ninety-seven. Renewed it back in twenty-ten, I think, two thousand nine, twenty-ten. But now, all of a sudden, after the mayor has an issue out there, now we're going after Wayne Water District and you just got here. So there's a problem there somewhere. Because in all these years, the city manager that was here never went after them. But you and Ron Lawrence decide to, and you decide to go negotiate on behalf of the city when nobody gave you permission to do that. Nobody gave you permission to name a price at no point. So both of you went outside your scope of work. Nowhere under your job title does it list that.
This has to deal with growth.
It, it doesn't matter about growth. We're talking about job, your job, and what you're, and what you're allowed to do and what you're not allowed to do. And that was something that you were not allowed to do. Bottom line. You didn't have approval for it. You didn't have approval for it.
The city manager can't negotiate contracts and work things out and then bring it to council for approval?
No, you cannot. No, you cannot negotiate. You cannot negotiate prices. You come to us first and then we tell you what price we want. After you speak with whoever about it, you come to us first. You don't name a price on behalf of the city. No, you do not have that power. Have you looked at your job title, sir?
It said amenable too. Doesn't mean that that would be
Have you looked at your job title?
Of course.
Okay, do you know the description? Your duties of work?
Yeah.
Okay, then, show me where it says that because it's not in there.
I'll take a look at it.
Okay, well, take a look at it again because obviously you don't know. You've only been a city manager for a few months. So you might need to go back and look at that. You were military before. I'm pretty sure whatever you handled came down from a chain of command. So you need to follow chain of command here too also. Thank you. Now, I'm gonna move on to some, some other issues that concern me over, over, over the last couple of days when we had a forum. And, uh, we spoke about a, a couple of different things. And, uh, a lot of different things bothered me that at the forum, some members of this council seemed to agree with, but when it came down to being on this council, you're totally against it. And I'm, I'm gonna start with one of the things that, and it bothered me how it was said. Um, Councilman Broadway said that, "Bevin, this is the first time I've ever agreed with you." That, that really bothered me. I, I mean, it, it really, it really did because it's sad that we've been on this council for four years together and you only agree with me one time. And that, that's kinda sad, but you said that you agree with me on special population. And when, 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 I can't remember what exact year it was. It might have been twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. I made a motion for special population housing here in Goldsboro. Uh, right now, radius is, 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 I can't remember. I think it's around sixteen hundred or something. I was trying to get that radius dropped down to around seven, eight hundred. Raleigh and Charlotte has dropped down their radius because they're trying to, they know that special pop- it's a need for special population. And the only, the main person that had an argument with that was Bill Broadway. But at the forum, you, you were all for special population. So I'm confused and I'm just confused about what, what are you really standing for, you know, because it's needed here. By, 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 per person, we have the highest special population in North Carolina. So, you know, uh, we have a lot of needs here for special population housing, just housing in general, homeless shelters, women's shelters. I mean, just everything, we need that. But we can't change that. We can't do anything about it without getting certain things approved because people that wanna be, move into the city, they can't do it. We can't have those businesses in the city, which is needed, which will create jobs, which will create more jobs once those houses are approved. So, another thing, um, we spoke about was, um, our mayor said that we have parks for those that are disabled. I haven't seen one. I'm sorry. We have a sidewalk for the park, but we don't have any equipment for those that are disabled. It's, it's a big difference. Um, that, that bothered me as well because, you know, it's like, oh, we have that, so, but we don't. It's needed. It's needed. What, what's the point of a kid being able to get there on the sidewalk, but then he can't get on the equipment? Just have to sit there and look? That's, that's just not good. Um, trying to think of what else we had that, that, that really struck a nerve to me during that night. Um, oh, let's get into this letter from, um, it says it's stated from Gene Nacop. It was sent to, uh, constituents in District Five. Six, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Don't get me. Um, the letter stated some, 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 some serious things. Um, the thing that I, that I mostly didn't like about it was, I mean, you made an attack on, on a fellow councilman, but then you, you, you used the councilman to make an attack on a on a, hopefully a future councilman that had nothing to do with anything from me. So I'd like to apologize for you, to you, Dr. Craig, for that, you know? But we're gonna address the issues that's in the letter. It stated that I'm a three-time felon. I don't disagree with that. I did what I did, I paid my debt to society. That's the thing people don't understand. Now, if, if you're gonna continue to knock me for that, you're gonna continue to try to put me down for that, what's the point of having rehabilitation? What's the point of telling someone you go to prison or you, you go on probation, you pay, you do your time, that, what's the point? You might as well just say, hey, you're done for the rest of your life. But with that, the sad thing about it is that I still made it here. With all that, regardless, I'm still in the same exact seat as you. We're gonna move on to the, one of the next things he said. Was spoke on the, and, and, and let's, let's, let me get straight, first of all. I, I can't say for sure that Mr. Acop wrote this letter. I'm just assuming.
I wrote it, I admit it.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's what I like, thank you for being honest about it. Second, we're gonna go on to the thing of me being an atheist. I apologize, sir, for not believing in a God that would allow me to do things that you do. I apologize for that. I apologize, we have a different God. My God won't allow me to do things that you do. I apologize. I've learned a lot of things about myself, so therefore I changed. So no, no, sir, I don't believe what you believe. If that's your Christian values and those are your beliefs, then that's fine. But as a Christian, you might want to think and read your Bible because you shouldn't be judging me off of anything. And if, and if you want to speak on, on, on your, on your Christian values, you might want to take a look at actions. Your actions speak louder than your words. So I just want to, want to state that. Last on the list, I'm gonna address the, the, the issue of pledging allegiance to the flag. I don't pledge allegiance to the flag because my ancestors was here before anything was established to be in America or any flag was brought about. My family's indigenous to this land, so therefore I don't have to do no pledge and I will not do it. But at the same time, I'm not gonna disrespect the military and the members that have fought and, and God, my family members as well. So I stand there. I don't put my hand over my heart. And I don't say it, but I stand there out of respect and I will continue to stand there out of respect. Now, you know, it's a lot of things about that people don't even know. Before you put your hand over your heart, they used to do a Hitler salute to the flag. But because most people don't know their history, they don't know that. You know, so there, there are a lot of different things and, and, and the letter bothered me, you know, and, and it took, I took time to sit back and I took time to look at it. And I said, I'm not gonna react. I wanted to see what Councilman Acop was gonna do. I, like I said, I take my hat off for you in meeting the truth. I think it's sad that you did it. I understand that you're scared. It's a scary, it's a scary situation. It's scary. You're possibly, probably losing your seat. It's a possibility of Goldsboro changing forever. This is, this is history. And, 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 and the thing, Goldsboro was established in 1902. Never in the 19, and that's 117 years has there been a black person running for a seat, every seat on this council.
That's right.
So yes, we're about to make history. We're about to make history with our first black woman ever on this council. So, but it took 117 years to do that. So the sad thing, the saddest thing is that we're still, as, as, as a black man, I sit here and have to go through these things from a fellow councilman. That is sad. In the year 2019, I have to get discriminated on and can't, can't, can't put certain things on agenda because I'm a black man. Councilman Williams has to go what he has, what he's been going through because he's a black man. That's all it is. It's simple. We're just gonna be honest about it. It's because of the color of our skin. And that is sad that we live in a world in 2019 that that's going on. Now, my last thing that I'm gonna say is that don't let this council fool you into thinking that we keep this military base here. We don't. It's a fear tactic that they are using. Oh, we need the military. Yes, we do need them. But if the decision is made for them not to be here, that decision is coming from the Pentagon and the US Senate and the US House. They're not, this has nothing to do with the city of Goldsboro. Zero. So whether this council is, 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 is black, white, or whatever, we can all represent and, and connect with those out there on the military base. It does not matter. I've been invited to the Colonel House just like they have. And I've been there just like them, regardless of what anybody might think. Councilman Williams as well. So we fought hard to be where we're at and we still have a lot of fighting to go. But it's a shame that we have to go through the things that we going through right here still in 2019. But I thank you for the support. I thank Councilman Williams for the support. Because it hasn't been an easy road, but we're gonna keep fighting and we're gonna keep fighting for the right thing. And I thank you.
Councilor Henry, you got any comments?
Yes. Yes, I'd like to acknowledge the event that took place here Saturday evening with the DGDC organization bringing together about 200 people, 200 citizens and business people out front on Center Street for its 20th annual DGDC awards banquet. This is an award banquet that acknowledges the work that volunteers and the organization have done to promote events downtown, support events downtown. It recognizes investments by individuals to put their money to create businesses, to improve facilities that their businesses are in. It brings together a spirit of togetherness to better, put a better face on Goldsboro, to make it a better place for people to come downtown, to shop, to be entertained, and overall improves the economic condition of Goldsboro, which makes it better for all of us. And my hats off to those people who volunteer each event and attend meetings on behalf of the DGDC and what their mission is to improve downtown. And as I said, this was a 20th anniversary and we've seen many, many changes take place over the last few years. And a lot of it has to do with them, but also those individuals who have committed their monies and their times and so forth to that.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Ray?
Discussion about the letter, yes, I wrote it. I wrote it to people in my district. I mailed it to them first class mail. I signed my name to it and I stand by everything in it and don't apologize for any of them. That's it.
Thank you. I, I got a couple of comments, just following up on what Councilmember Foster said. I do set the agenda, I agree with that. I don't think I've ever told Councilmember Foster or Councilman Williams or any other councilman that couldn't have anything on the agenda. This was the first time that's happened. The reason I told him he couldn't have it on the agenda is we talked about it at the last two meetings, we talked about the last, the same thing the last two meetings. And he didn't have anything new to offer. So I said I wasn't gonna put it on the agenda. So that's why it didn't get put on the agenda. But just to get some facts out there that weren't correct. First off, we've been selling water to Case Farms for years, before I was involved, before he was involved. You say, what do you want? They can show you, the finance folks can show you the water bill. We've been showing, we've been selling water to them. We have a contract with Wayne Water District. The contract says you cannot sell to any of our customers. Wayne Water District was buying water from us for $3.17. They were selling it to Case Farms for $4 and something, okay? So our taxpayers were supplementing Wayne Water District, Southern Wayne Water District selling the Case Farms. Our contract says you can't do that. Our staff, the manager, the attorney, all our department heads are negotiating contracts all the time with all kinds of people, all kinds of vendors, it happens all the time before we ever see it. So to say they can't do it, it's not true. It's been happening ever since we've been a city. So they do that. Every department head negotiates contracts. They have to be approved by the city, by the council. But they, they're, they've just negotiated, the, the public works folks have just been negotiating a sewer contract with Primark that I'm aware of. So it goes on all the time. They get the negotiations, then they bring it to the council for approval. It's not official, it's not approved till it comes to the council. That is true. But they do, are out front with the negotiations because if we waited on everything that comes to us, you'd never get anything done. So they do do that. I just want to be clear that the manager's perfectly in his rights to do that. And then I, I just want to say that we do try to work with everybody. I mean, that's what we try to do. I don't, I don't think anybody up here cares if anybody's black, white, or purple. That's just not right. We shouldn't say that because that's not true. And I don't, I don't appreciate that part of it because it has nothing to do with race. But we, but the, 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 Case Farms thing has been going on. We can get the information and I think you'll see what we're saying is correct.
You talking to me now?
Do what?
Did you say something?
I did not say anything.
You didn't start until you went out there.
They were already working on the contract where I had anything to it.